So I will, excuse me, call to order, excuse me, I will call to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee Thursday, March 34th, 2022, and would ask that everyone please rise and join us. Republic.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic.
Public.
stands one nation for my god.
Thank you. Thank you.
If we could just remain standing for one minute, we're gonna have a moment of silence tonight. Many of you may know Mary Lou Connors, she's been the longtime director at the Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center, and her mom just recently passed away, Connie Connors, at eighty-eight years old. And many, many years ago in North Andover, she started the first CPAC and the first napron during a time probably when those didn't exist in other communities. So just a moment of silence for Connie Connors. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So Ms. Picard usually prompts me on who is virtual and who is in person, and I see the value of that tonight, of course. I am virtual, as I know Ms. Picard is, and I can see Lindsay Trong. But Holly, I'm wondering if you could help me see who is in the room with us tonight?
Yep, for the school committee, we have Pam Petrowski and Joe Hicks and myself.
Okay.
Dr. Gilligan.
Administration.
Greg Gilligan, Superintendent.
Irene Marx, Assistant Superintendent, Executive Director of Special Education, Marcy Bukusi, and Dr. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much. I cannot see if there is public, but I'm wondering if there is any public. I do not believe, Ms. Picard, we had any requests to be called in.
That is correct, we had no call-in requests.
Okay.
No public comment in the room either.
None from the room, okay. All right, before we begin with the meeting, I do, I know we've got recognition, and we have a recognition that's there, but I would like to recognize our newest school committee member, Mr. Joe Hicks. Thank you very much, I know you were sworn in yesterday and fully ready to accept all of the responsibilities. I'm not sure if you have a name plate yet, that's one of the official things that happens, but I know that that is coming, so welcome, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, with recognition, Dr. Gilligan, can you kick us off here with Bob Anakosis?
Yeah, so with recognition tonight, we are going to move that up. Mr. Nugent was not able to attend tonight, so it has been taken off the agenda. We'll have that at an upcoming meeting.
Okay, all right, I thought we were still, okay. All right, so we will move on to, excuse me, consent agenda items. We have a donation from the NAMs PTAC, which is a donation of thirty-five hundred dollars regarding the middle school library for new books, a double-sided book cart, and a printer. Is there any information, Dr. Mealy, that you might have on that, or anything additional for our packet?
Yeah, not really anything more to add, that this is what they've chosen for this year, for money they've raised to donate to the middle school library. And you see the items that they have identified as the needs.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so I would entertain a motion to accept the NAMs PTAC donation.
I will move that we accept the donation from the NAMs PTAC for the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, motion by Ms. Vitski, is there a second?
Second.
Second, satellite, Ms. Petrowski?
Correct.
Okay, I will ask, if there's any comments or questions, we'll start and end virtually tonight, so Ms. Picard?
Yep, I'm just wondering, is this the funds that were raised by the Dance Challenge? Or did they have other fundraisers? It's just a curiosity question.
I don't know off the top of my head what they used to raise the money, but I could certainly find out for you.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm curious.
I can tell you just quickly, we do have another donation coming up next week from NAMs as well. So I think that once those funds kind of came in, they started to figure out how they were gonna do that. But we'll probably get that answer for you for next week, Ms. Picard. Questions from the room? I'll start at the top of my screen and go clockwise here, Ms. Vitski?
No questions.
Ms. Petrowski? Mr. Hicks?
Nope.
All right, so I will call for a roll call vote here, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so five oh, thank you very much to the North Andover Middle School PTAC for their incredible donation to the library. We'll move on, I'm sorry, might have been an echo, I'm sorry. We're gonna move on to the minutes from March seventeenth. So I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
I'll move that we accept the minutes from March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Vitski, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Petrowski, okay. I do want to point out, it is my mistake, but in the minutes when we accepted the donation from the Marmac Valley Striders, we voted on this, we voted five, nothing, but I cannot find, nor can Michelle or Bev, in the minutes where we had a motion and a second on that. So I think the minutes do reflect that, I would like to have us vote on that officially, formally, in old business tonight, just so that the record is clear on that, but that's the only anomaly, anomaly, I would say, for that.
Mr. McDevitt, do you wanna take that out of order after we vote on this, so that we don't forget when we get to old business?
We can, that's fine. Any other thoughts or questions on the minutes? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I'll start virtually here, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Hicks?
I abstain.
You abstain, okay. And the chair votes yes, so we are four oh one on the minutes, okay. So Ms. Picard made a good suggestion regarding the Marmac Valley Striders donation for ten thousand dollars, just so that we can correct the motion process for that. Again, my mistake, I would entertain a motion to accept the Marmac Valley Striders donation of ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Sounded like motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Ms. Vitski. Sorry, making my notes. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, five oh, so we have accepted the donation for ten thousand dollars a second time, but it's still only ten thousand dollars, so. Perfect. All right, so we will move on to our student report, it looks like we have Lindsay, I'm not sure we have Ethan tonight, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. I'm gonna start us off with something very exciting that you may know, it's the Mr. NA winners. Crown Mr. North Andover is Nate Williams with his sponsor Jenna Barnes. Second place is Matt McDevitt and his sponsor Ellis Leighton. Third is Will Frye with his sponsor Jenna Bard, great job to the participants and their sponsors, as well as their mentors, who worked hard to make this show happen, and big props to Mrs. Master Monaco and Mrs. McDevitt, who were the reason why this show could happen this year. Moving on, we have our sports section, and all the sports team members have participated in the night's care campus cleanup on our environmental slash service day, alongside many students who came out to help. Huge shout out to our NAS sports captains on being so organized and effective about this. And it is the last day to register for track and field for students in grade forty-eight. Registration fee goes up after April first, and the fee is currently ninety-five dollars. Girls Across Junior Varsity Home Opener is this Friday against Central Catholic at four thirty PM, and fifth and sixth graders will be playing at the halftime. At our clubs, we have the InterMSA Ramadan event at the high school cafeteria on April first, which is tomorrow at four to eight PM. There will be a calligraphy workshop, speakers from the MSA UMass Lowell, and games and competitions, and food is included. So stop on by if you have time. The Desi Club will also be holding a fundraiser for the YWCA at the InterMSA event, so please also look out for them there. And also, we held another successful activity-based club fair at the high school today, in collaboration with Student Council's Night's Care Week. Something on the horizon are MCAS dates, so ELA MCAS for session one is grades, for grades three to five is April sixth. ELA MCAS session two, grades three to five is April seventh. Echoing NAS Principal Jackson's words in his latest update, quote, "Our sophomores completed their ELA MCAS exams on Chromebooks this past Tuesday and Wednesday. They did a great job remembering to bring their Chromebooks for the test." So that's just really interesting, the change of what's happening with their Chromebooks, they have to bring it in for MCAS now. And a reminder for an MCAS date on the horizon is that for sophomores, their math and math will be on May seventeenth and May eighteenth, and will need their Chromebooks as well. There is an upcoming mandated health screening for ninth graders. The second semester of SBIRT and postural screenings will be conducted for ninth graders who have not been screened yet. Any parent or guardian wishing to opt their student out of these screenings should contact our nurses by April first, two thousand twenty-two, so that's at the high school. And for more information, please visit the North Andover High School website. As for our band, we also have the All-Town Band Concert coming up on the horizon, and that is in the NAS gym from seven to nine PM. For chorus, their competition is tomorrow, they're all really excited about it, that is three to ten PM. It's the MICA Festival, and they have been working really hard on it, so if you wanna go cheer the mom and visit, it's at Westboro High School on Ninety West Main Street. And so tomorrow, we have, our student council has been really hyped about this, because it's our night's care rally. We have everything from trivia, dance, a robot race created by our own robotics teams, that's really exciting. We have a balloon race, and what people are most looking forward to is our basketball game, as well as a dunk tank. So we will be seeing teachers getting dunked tomorrow. And just another thing is that end of quarter three grades will be updated Friday, the fifteenth, at four PM. The third quarter will conclude students, and no, it ends on Friday, the eighth, but the grades get updated on the fourteenth, sorry about that. And another thing is that the Youth Center Job Fair will be Wednesday, April sixth, from six PM to eight PM. If you have any questions, you could go check out the website at na youth dot com slash job fair. The Stevens Memorial Library is also holding a personal finance workshop on April sixth, from seven to eight PM on Zoom, so if you want to learn more about that, please visit their website. And there's an upcoming NA Parent Resource Network on teen and tween dating, I found that really interesting. So if you wanna learn more about that or visit, it is happening at the North Andover Middle School from seven to eight PM on April thirteenth. That is all for the student report.
Thank you, Lindsay, I was actually gonna say the teen dating resource meeting on, during my report as well. It's sponsored, I think, by the parent resource, as well as the farmer's market. So I think that's, that's a great partnership that's there as well, so, awesome.
And it's actually till eight thirty, seven to eight thirty.
Oh, okay, awesome. All right, any questions? We'll start virtually here, Ms. Picard?
Thank you, Lindsay, I do have a couple of questions, and they actually might be more questions for Dr. Gilligan or his team, but you mentioned two screenings, the postural screening and the SB other screening, I think that's a mental health screening, is that right? And if you're not sure, we'll get Dr. Gilligan to answer.
Yeah, I'm not too sure about this, I just read it off of Mr. Jackson's update, so.
That's wonderful. Dr. Gilligan, do you wanna answer that?
We do an expert, it's a check-in, and, you know, it gives a little bit of information, if guidance has to follow up with that information, they do so, so.
That's great, well, I mean, we've, we've been reading the headlines that say that, you know, the COVID crisis has shifted from a concern about academics to a concern about mental health, so, so I'm glad we've got that going. And you were mentioning the Q three grades are gonna be updated, and I, we've done different things with comments on Power School, and I was wondering, do you anticipate you'll have comments from your teachers this quarter? Or is that something that happens or doesn't happen, and is it valuable to you or not important to you?
I believe I received comments on the last quarter, but it was mostly just like completes work on time, that sort of thing, not necessarily like personalized. So take it as you will, but I think most students, it is helpful to see.
Thank you very much, that's all I have, Mr. McDevitt, thank you.
Okay, perfect, Ms. Vitski?
No comments, thank you, Lindsay.
Ms. Petrowski?
No comments, good job, Lindsay, I'll ride in solo tonight, great job.
Mr. Hicks?
Yeah, quick question, Lindsay, on the band performance, what was the date of that, at the middle school?
The date of this?
Yeah.
Oh.
It was right before the chorus one.
Yeah. I can look really quickly, I don't think I have it here.
This is stump Lindsay night.
Sorry.
First time for everything, though, right? Never happens.
Hold on, I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Not a problem, thank you.
That is April fifth.
I don't think I have anything else, great job, Lindsay. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Is there any update on new student reps who will come with us through the spring and be ready for the fall?
Yep, so we actually have a call scheduled with Mr. Jackson, we'll be working on that, kinda once we hit the April, April corner here.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yep. All right, Dr. Gilligan?
Thank you, Chair McDevitt, starting out tonight with the superintendent's report. As you know, on March seventeenth, for those who watched or were present, we had a tremendous presentation by our Executive Director of Special Education, Marcy Bukusi, on an overview of all the programming, and I'd like to reintroduce Marcy tonight to talk about one of our programs that we have that's been very successful, and have her introduce the folks, and talk about, you know, bringing to life one of the things she had mentioned last time, which is our special education vocational program update, so.
And I give credit where credit's due, Dr. Gilligan had a great idea that after the presentation came to me after that, and one of the things we talked about is I did a lot of description of programs, but we thought it'd be a nice follow-up to give some student and teacher voice to some of those. So I reached out to kind of a staple in our school, and on very short notice, so I wanna thank Mr. Burr and Sawyer, I wanna, I wanna say Shelby every single time, Sawyer and his mom and dad for coming here on such short notice, so. They're gonna give a brief description, and Sawyer, you have a brief presentation as well?
He's gonna help you with the description, yeah?
Perfect.
Where should we just stand?
Come right up here. You can sit.
Well, good evening, everyone, first, I just wanna say thank you for having us tonight, I know you have a lot of important agenda items to get to, so, but we really appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time to talk about what we do on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis. My name is Ryan Burr, I'm the lead special ed teacher of the sixteen to twenty-two Vocational Life Skills Program at North Andover High School. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Walker Smith.
And where do you go to school, Sawyer?
North Andover High School.
Awesome, and what grade are you in?
I'm, I'm a junior.
A junior, soon to be senior, which makes me feel old, but it's coming up quick. So Sawyer, what's your favorite things about high school?
My favorite things about high school is working in school store in yoga.
Working in the school store and yoga, Mrs. Newman will be happy to hear that she got a yoga class shout-out tonight, she'll be very excited about that. Sawyer, can you tell us about some of the jobs you work at?
I work at Market Basket to buy food for Sarah and Isaac, and start cheese, cheese, and do stack ball of chairs and cleaning tables, and doing pizza boxes, and doing the lunch side, they're dressing containers.
Excellent, Sawyer, awesome, so the first thing Sawyer mentioned was, we do a weekly, I mean, I'm sorry, a daily trip to Market Basket, and he mentioned Allison and Sarah, they're the teachers of the focus program at North Andover High School, and they cook with their students every day, and we go shopping for them every day, and it gives our students a great opportunity to kind of familiarize themselves with the food, with food shopping. They get an email every morning from Allison and Sarah, and they transcribe the email onto a paper list with the aisles and the number of items that they need to get, then we go to the store and they navigate through the store, find the items that they need to get, and then pay for the items that we need to get. The second job that Sawyer mentioned is Stachi's Pizza, which some of you I'm sure are familiar with here in North Andover. We go there a few days a week, and Sawyer really likes to fold the pizza boxes, he's recently started a new job, job of filling salad dressing containers there. We set up the dining area, clean the tables, do all that, get all that set up ready. So if you've gotten a pizza or a salad from Stachi's, there's a good chance that one of our students made that box or filled that salad dressing container for you. What's another job we do at school, the school store?
I work in the school store to sell candy and data cash register.
Yes, so Sawyer recently got promoted to be our head cashier at the school store, we run a little school store next to the cafeteria where we sell candy and treats for the students, but it really gives our students a really overview of all sorts of different life and job skills that they can have. So Sawyer works on the cash register primarily because he loves his math and he's so good at math, we have a fully functioning cash register there. So those skills can directly relate to any sort of department store cash register, or anything like that. Sawyer and other students also work in customer service and helping fill orders for the students. So it really, there's a lot of job skills that we can teach in the school setting, but that we hope to generalize outside of the school setting. And that's really the biggest thing of what our program does, is we're always looking to have our students reach their highest level of independence. And to do that, we need to work on generalizing skills outside of the school setting. It's great if our students can do their skills in the classroom and in that structured school environment, but it's even more important that they can bring those skills home and bring them to a job someday. Sawyer, what about Friday mornings, what do we do on Friday mornings?
On Friday mornings, I get the coffee shop and deal with coffee to teachers.
Awesome, yeah, so we run a small little coffee shop on Friday mornings for our school staff. On Thursdays, we actually start to prep for it, and the students make coffee and tea and get that ready for iced coffee and iced teas the next morning. And then on Friday mornings, through Google Forms, we have orders come in from the staff, and the students take the order forms and fulfill the orders, deliver the orders, so there's customer service built in there, you know, reading comprehension, all those types of things. A lot of skills that directly relate to job skills in the field that they can work on at school. And then finally, what's one fun thing we do during the week on Fridays?
On Fridays, we went to be transferred to community trip to restart school store.
Yeah, so on Fridays, we take a community trip every Friday, and a lot of the times, we're taking our community trip to restock the school store, because we sell out of items so fast at the school store, so we'll go to BJ's or Restaurant Depot, and we'll restock items there. And again, it kind of is that full circle, the students get to sell the items to the, to their fellow students at the school, they get to keep track of stock of the items, and then they get to restock the items when we're running low, so there's just a lot of really great job skills built into that. On top of the jobs that we do, we're also, we also focus a lot on functional academic skills, so things like budgeting, money skills, listening and reading comprehension, anything that can relate directly to a job skill or life skill out in the real world. Students will work on their hygiene routines, you know, they might practice, you know, washing their hands, washing their face, brushing their teeth, things like that, and, and daily independent living skills, so we do, we stay busy, don't we, Sawyer?
Yes.
Yes, we do, but it's a lot of fun, right?
Right.
Awesome, I know you guys have a lot to get to, but we would be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions for us.
Awesome, great job, Sawyer, so Ms. Picard, we'll start with you.
I don't have any questions, but I'm very pleased to hear your experience, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Awesome, Ms. Vitski?
Yeah, I love this, thank you so much for coming, Sawyer, I have two questions for you. One, what is the best-selling item in the school store?
I like to sell red mints and jelly ranchers.
Red mints and jelly ranchers.
I figured it was gonna be candy.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, what's your favorite job, you do a lot of jobs, so what's your favorite?
My favorite job is work in Market Basket and school store and Stachi's.
All right.
Likes them all.
Yes, he does, thank you for coming. No more questions.
Awesome, all right, Ms. Petrowski?
I don't have any questions, thank you so much, this is great, Sawyer, you're doing a great job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome, Mr. Hicks?
Yeah, just a couple, one quick question, how many other students and friends are in the program?
So in our classroom, we have four students, and we also work with a sophomore in freshman classroom, who have another six students. So there's ten of us in our program altogether right now, so we, we stay busy. Yep, one, one recent graduate who left us in January, who reached his age of twenty-two to graduate into the adult world, so, very exciting.
Yes.
Thank you very much, it's a great job, Sawyer.
Thank you.
Awesome, no other questions, other than just great job, I, I love all the different things that you do in the school, so, awesome job, thank you, Sawyer.
Thank you guys for having us.
I just, just, sorry, I just wanna just say thank you and appreciate the work that, I mean, like I said, doing a presentation, I hope this is the first time in my experience that we've had student, a, a student voice from students outside of our maybe more general education setting, and Sawyer did an amazing job, and I encourage you to tell your peers about this, because I hope this is something that we can continue to do in, in the future as well, so, great job.
Thank you.
Shelby, did you wanna say anything, if you?
So I just wanna thank everybody, Mr. Burr, thank you so, so much, I yell a lot, so. I just hope you all understand what an amazing program North Andover has. We moved here because of the special education program, the amazing teachers here. We are very lucky to have educators like this, and so I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart. My son would not be doing as well as, as he is, but for this school community, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's wonderful to hear.
And thank you, folks, again, we do a lot of presentations, but to bring it to life and hear from the students, I think that's always the best, and we used to do that a little bit more pre-pandemic, and it's great to have people back in, and it was really tremendous for you to invite me for a ceremony for the student that had graduated at twenty-two this past January, that was quite a day. So thank you, and thank you, Sawyer, for a wonderful presentation tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Dr. Mealy, thank you so much, tonight's health update, again, I'll be doing that typically, I mean, Cheryl Barzak's been in for a couple of years now, every meeting, but we're at eight, it's something we continue to meet on and keep a close eye on, we're currently at eight as of today. If you can go to the next slide, Jim, similar presentation to last time, you can see where we really peaked in January, and some really high numbers during that time. And, you know, we will link this to the agenda after, we linked it to the last agenda, just shows you the weekly cases over time. And last but not least, we have the COVID vaccination rate, student vaccination rate. And we continue to work, Ms. Barzak and the town, with continuing, particularly with our younger kids, getting students vaccinated, and we've even had the opportunity to start being able to do that during the school day with some special permissions from parents. And we haven't had a lot of people take us up on it yet, so I think that most folks who plan to do that have done it, but, you know, that's where we are, and hopefully we can continue to keep these numbers low, so. That is that with the health update for this evening.
Any questions from the room? Any questions from the room? Ms. Picard, trying to look in, uh Ms. Wietzke, Ms. Petrowski, Mr. Hicks? I'm seeing heads shaking, I think.
One quick question, Dr. Gilligan, about the vaccination rates and just like, I'm wondering what the correlation or causation or what might be happening in terms of like Atkinson and Thompson having significantly lower vaccination rates than our other schools? And if there's anything we might wanna think about doing for those two communities?
Yeah, so it's absolutely something we've actually worked on, and I can have this mic.
We actually had a vaccination clinic there. Um we, they were centrally located before, but because of those lower numbers, we tried going right to the school. So we had a vaccination clinic um scheduled for Thompson. We did not have a lot of um takers. We thought it might make it easier for some families. So we did actually open that up, and we had some, we did unfortunately have some other students who came to Thompson to get vaccinated. We were going to open one up at Atkinson as well, but it just doesn't seem like the um interest is there right now. But because of our concern as well about the lower numbers, we, we, we were going to Thompson and then to Atkinson, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so you've gone through everyone. No more questions on that, so we'll move along to parent information night for kindergarten. This is a big one. Um I think this is the first time we've done this one in a while, um so we're pretty excited. You know, to have our kindergarten information night for parents and guardians, and that will be Thursday, April seventh, um twenty twenty-two at the middle school. Um we're really excited about uh getting folks back to that. You know, we keep promoting this, tweeting it out, uh sending out information around town, so um you know, if you know anyone that um has to register for kindergarten, please do so. And also, um you know, just our registration um link that takes us to the registration update. And really how to kind of work through that, um the registration. Um one of the upcoming meetings, we'll probably have our parent liaisons in. We hired some bilingual parent liaisons this year who've done a tremendous job really helping us as families with the registration process. You know, that typically come into central office. Um so we've tried to make it easier on our parents. It's um, it's a process that, you know, you have to fill out online, or you can come in and do it, but there's also paperwork involved, so. You know, for some folks, it's easier to upload or take a picture of things, and for others, you know, we get the documents, so um we just link that as well. And um kind of the big um information tonight, you know, we're pretty excited about. Uh I don't know if you wanna click on that next, Dr. Mealy, or um, and you can certainly talk about it, but um. Facilities Master Plan Two, Monday, uh April fourth at seven PM. It's the big call-in night. Uh we've tweeted this out, we've been promoting it. You know, there's a phone number, uh you know, in the newsletter that we sent out to the whole community, we didn't have the phone number yet and different things, but uh the town manager and I have been working closely. Um so I'll be there with the town manager and uh Dr. Mealy and Lori Berzloff, uh as well as Chair McDevitt and Chair Bates from the Select Board. Um and it will be all things Facilities Master Plan Two. So uh any questions, it will be live on NA Cam, and you can call or email in with questions. You know, and the link is there, and there's actually a phone number to call. It's kind of like the old days of, you know, dialing in. You know, and you dial in nine seven eight six eight one oh one eight four. I did ask the town manager of Cam, you know, if there's like a seven second delay or, you know, how that works, but uh I'm pretty excited about it in case folks, you know, have more questions about it. This is one of the most significant projects uh that we're undertaking. We're really excited about it. And I'd uh turn it over to Dr. Mealy to add anything if he has anything else to say.
Is there anything left?
No, I, I'm looking forward to it. April fourth, we had the public forums. We had eight of them in the fall uh as a way to try to get the word out and the information out, and this is another, another way to do so. Uh we hope that uh people take advantage of it, and we're looking forward to any questions that uh people might have about this project.
Great, yeah. This morning too, I had the opportunity to meet with the PTO presidents. I meet with them every month. Um it's awesome because we meet live and a couple of them zoom in. But you know, it's something that I was able to promote with them uh as well. And it was terrific to um have that meeting. It was, Amy Mabley typically has attended from the school committee. It was her last one. We kind of had her to celebrate and see her off. Um and at the PTO presidents this morning, besides filling them in and reminding them about the call-in show. I've been working with NAMA, the, uh not the Music Association that made that wonderful donation a few weeks ago, the Merchant Association. So back in November, December, I met with Andy Furman, who's no longer on the board, um but Janice Phillips, um who I think's on almost all the boards. She's Farmer's Market, everything else, but she came as a representative of NAMA today to talk to our PTO about, you know, um you know, a mutually beneficial relationship between our schools and NAMA, and the people we rely on for donations and, and, you know, supporting local business and some of those connections between the PTOs at all the schools and the merchants association. Um and we're pretty excited about a future too, um particularly with the new high school schedule that we put in, um where it's not a waterfall schedule anymore, about some opportunities in terms of career or job shadowing or, you know, going out uh in the field because we have a lot of talented folks and businesses here in town. So pretty exciting morning with the PTO folks, and please tune in, uh seven o'clock on Monday. And the phone number, the link, it's all there, and any questions you have about Facilities Master Plan Two.
Awesome. Uh thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Any questions from the committee? So, uh Ms. Picard?
Yep, um I just, um I'm glad to hear that we're um working with NAMA um about the changes to the high school schedule and what the opportunities are. Um and at some point in the future, I'll look forward to hearing um what the high school's plans around that are and what the specific goals are, like how many kids they wanna have in um different positions, and um I think we've created the opportunity. Obviously, this is the first year. There's a lot of um things to work through, and we certainly started with COVID. But in order for us to really take full advantage of this, I will hope that we'll be setting some um goals and um reporting out on those at some point in the future. Thank you.
Other questions from the room? Can't really tell.
There are none in the room.
None in the room, okay. Thanks, thanks for the help there. The only question that I had, and I was actually gonna bring this up in the chair's report, um for the forum. The Select Board Chair is there, is the uh Chair of the FinCom gonna be there as well? Do we know that?
For Monday night?
Monday night, yes, I'm sorry.
Um I was not told that they would be. I, uh the list I was given was that the town manager, the superintendent, myself, Lori Berzloff, uh yourself, and Laura Bates, the Chair of the Select Board. Uh I was not told that the Finance Committee Chair would be there.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so um, sorry. For the chair's report, a couple of quick things. Lindsay stole my um idea or my comments on the teen dating parent resource on the thirteenth. Um and then I was gonna speak a little bit about the forum here tonight as well. One of the other things that's happening uh in the middle of April as well, on April thirteenth, is the Matthew, Matthew Hardy uh Mitro Classic uh Street Hockey uh Tournament that occurs at the middle, um at the U Center. I believe this is the ninth year for that, and I think uh for students who were going to register for that, uh I think the deadline is coming up to secure a shirt size. I think they can always kind of um uh register for that. But it's a great day where I know a number of students uh gather to um to reflect on a student that we lost a number of years ago. Another uh item that I wanted to just bring up is um I've started meeting with uh Town Moderator Mark DeSalvo and Suzanne Egan and Jim Mealy regarding the building committees as it relates to uh the MSBA project as well as the middle school. Uh so we will be coming forward with that, and we'll be putting together those uh committees. Those are not needed um to be finalized um out until uh September, but I do wanna get a jump start on that uh with all of the community members as well. And then, uh Dr. Mealy, could you bring up for us, please, the subcommittee liaisons for fiscal year twenty twenty-two? Thank you. All right. So one of the things that I just uh wanted to go through, I don't think we need to have a decision today. I would like to thank you again for enlarging that, uh especially for the folks that are uh following along at home. Uh Ms. Mabley did leave us, um uh I guess yesterday when, when Mr. Hicks kind of joined in. So we do need to go through and uh identify if there are different places um that make sense now uh with, with Joe and his skills uh for coming in and uh how we're gonna start to look at this. We're also going to, at our next meeting, do a reorg of the committee as well. Um so I kind of thought that we might do that today. Just a quick turnaround uh with everything, and, and we'll add that in uh for next week. So I think that that might make some sense in terms of how people fall in and some of the things that the, the new vice chair may take for that. But specifically, you know, in terms of where Mrs. Mabley uh was leading us and helping us. Uh she and Pam uh were working on policy, uh no doubt with uh Town Council Suzanne Egan, as well as um uh MS, uh MASC. Um and then as Vice Chair, she was in charge of the Hall, or our representative to the Hall of Fame Committee for the Educator Hall of Fame. And then jumping down, uh she finished off our meeting today with the PTO presidents, uh but we will need a new liaison uh for that meeting as well. So I don't wanna put people on the spot for this tonight. Um I think for Joe, just kind of getting in and, and seeing what the, the committees are and all of that, I don't wanna start kind of putting that out to him right away. Uh so I would like an opportunity to um have everybody kind of just think through this uh one more time, and then uh coming back on the twelfth for our next meeting, uh we'll do some reassignment and some reshuffling, if that makes sense. Yes, Ms. Picard?
My question is about the PTO presidents. Um I think that's a daytime meeting at this point, and I would ask um Dr. Gilligan if that is um a movable feast, um so that it might be possible for, um you know, Ms. Mabley had some daytime flexibility that um I'm not sure all of us as members have um at this time, um so that's my question. Is that, um is that a meeting that can be scheduled at a time that's convenient for, you know, all the folks that would need to go to it?
Yeah, so it's interesting. It's been done differently over the years, and certainly think it would be open to it, but it is the PTO president's meeting, and that's the time that seems to work best for them. You know, I don't, I think a lot of the co-presidents, maybe it's the time probably when their kids are in school, so. But we could certainly look at possibly other opportunities, and there's been other ways to do it um that, that it's been done in the past. So certainly something to think about.
Is it just an hour long usually?
Yes.
I could probably fit that in.
Okay.
Cause if it's advanced notice, you know, we know the same date every month, right? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and I was actually gonna say, um Holly, I may be able to help shoulder that responsibility there as well.
Perfect.
So, um you know, I, I think as long as we can plan for that, um I, I think we can probably be pretty, pretty good. I, I do think um some other members, as, as Ms. Picard said, you know, it might be difficult to get away for, for an hour afternoon meeting.
Yeah, actually, we talked about this today. It was interesting.
Sorry.
Yeah, um everyone, you know, everyone has a different situation. Um and, you know, in the past, we've had one school committee rep to each school, and they'd go to meetings. And the PTO presidents, they didn't seem like that was, you know, something that really worked all that well for them. They, they seemed to like it this way, but I can certainly ask at the next meeting. I mean, even prior to, we can connect with them.
Right. And, and again, we're really there as a liaison to kind of, you know, help and understand kind of what's going on and what's happening within our schools and our buildings and how we can support the PTO. So, you know, uh it, it's a great partnership that we have, but uh, you know, I, I think we just wanna make sure that we can accurately represent and kind of help them with that as well, so perfect. Okay, uh any questions about any of the committees that are here? I'm not looking directly at them, but I'm looking a little bit at Mr. Hicks. Uh any, any questions on any of the ones that are here?
School building. Can we get like a ten second description of the school building one?
Yes, so the um anytime we are doing construction on a building, we are required to have a school building committee. Um and depending on what's going on and how that is structured, there are certain members that are appointed by uh the Chair of the School Committee and certain members that are appointed by Town Moderator. So we will actually have two as we move forward. One will be related to the middle school, and the other will be related to the Kittredge. The difference in two, and why we'll have two, um is a little bit interesting. One, MSBA has some different requirements in terms of um who is on the committee. There's some kind of obligatory um responsibilities and, and some uh town staff members who, who have to be on that committee. The other thing is, um you know, they can overlap. The question and the concern that I think we all have is that this will be an awful lot of work, um and I don't think we want to have um too many people kind of serving double duty on these as well. Uh it's just, um it's good work, it's hard work, but you know, for, to, to do the planning for the middle school and also simultaneously the planning, we just wanna make sure we have different people. Um that, again, there will be some overlap, um so that, you know, we're not putting the burden on everybody. Or the same people, I should say. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, that helps a lot. And then my second question was, um in terms of the three different negotiation um committees, where are we, just in terms of like where in the contract years are we, where those might be coming up?
Yeah, so Jim, can you scroll up a little bit? Oh, there you go, okay. So correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I believe teachers, we will start next year. Assuming that we um have a request from the union to negotiate. We had it still here because there were a number of MOAs that occurred throughout the year um as we were turned back in. And um Helen and I had um kind of shouldered some of that responsibility that was there. And then the same with uh teaching assistants and custodians as well regarding MOAs, and Helen had served on those. But I don't remember for teaching assistants and custodians um where they are in the cycle. I feel like this is year two, but I could be wrong on that.
No, you're correct. Teachers and teaching assistants are on the same schedule. They will be entering into their third year of the contract next year, and negotiations will begin at some point next year so that we have a successor agreement in place for the end of the year, and then custodian of the year, a year behind them.
Thank you.
Administrative assistants was two thousand twenty. I think we did it.
Correct.
Cause I was on that one.
So that'll come up as well, right?
Yep.
All right.
There will certainly be plenty of leadership, and we will all be needed.
Oh, yes. All right. Other questions on that? Okay, so what we'll do is uh percolate on this a little bit. We'll also percolate on the restructuring uh of the committee. Uh we don't have a vice chair right now, but we'll rectify that on the twelfth of April.
Mr. McDevitt, who will accompany you in the agenda setting meeting um for the next meeting?
Uh I was actually gonna ask if you or Holly would be able to do that. So um I was just gonna kind of work with either of you offline to figure out who, who would be best for that. But uh um usually we, we work on the Monday before the meeting uh to secure that in. With a Tuesday meeting, I think we have to have that published by Friday. Um so it'll probably be, whatever that is, the seventh or the eighth of uh April to do that. We usually do that early in the morning to be sure that um we have time to get it set up and then linked and over to Town Hall um for all the documents. So I was just gonna reach out to you guys and figure out who had some availability to, to help with that.
I'm happy to help with that, and also obviously Holly's perfectly capable of doing that, so whoever you need. Um I just, I do think it's really important. We've kept a, a strategy of having what, what we call two deep leadership in Boy Scouts, and I, I feel like that's served us. two-deep leadership in Boy Scouts and I feel like that's served us so well. It keeps us, you know, it keeps us together. Something happens to one person, you know, the other person can carry the information and so I appreciate that we do that, thank you.
Yep, awesome. All right. Other questions? All right. So, moving ahead, Dr. Mealy, I don't know what else you may have regarding the facilities master plan.
I thought it would make sense to, for Joe's benefit, you probably have navigated this already, but, and for those at home in prep for Monday night, if you want to do some research, again, to remind people where the information is, this is the North Andover front page website. And right there on the front page is facilities master plan two that you can click on and get a lot of information. Upcoming meetings and events, so there, right in front, you see the April 4th town hall meeting and then, May 17th is town meeting. You get the history of the project, kind of a summary of it, and you get the presentations, the facilities master plan, final report, the presentation that the town manager did, you can look at that, the public forums that we held, you can see all of those. And the final report that the subcommittee did, the space capacity subcommittee. Or you could click on that heading and go to our page on the school department website and see all of the information that we have there, which includes the same information, a letter from Dr. Gilligan and myself, the final recommendation to the school committee, the final report is a click away right here. And all the other information, all of the public forum presentations are available as well and pretty much anything that you would like to find, it has the assessments. Those are fun to drill down into, to see the different buildings and the issues that we're addressing. So, all that information is available right there on the town website and the school website.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Picard?
Yeah, I'm wondering, Jim, I know that the select board approved an agreement on the Royal Crest property and I believe that there's the potential for an impact on the facilities master plan two and I'm wondering if you know if the town manager has an intention of including that in this document or other ways that that information might be shared.
So, relevant to the facilities master plan, and this came up during the planning board, the combined planning board, select board meeting, we were asked specifically if we had taken into account the Royal Crest development happening as a possibility in our enrollment projections in facilities master plan final recommendation and we assured them that we had, they were included. That project was included in our projections and accounted for.
And my understanding was the agreement, the pre-agreement, the $10 million agreement could potentially impact the Franklin School projects that are included in facilities master plan two.
Part of that agreement is, there are quite a bit of benefits to that agreement, one of them being the Franklin, or part of the Franklin project getting moved up because funds would be made available to add the gym that they do not have, renovate that space they call a gym right now for a useful space in the building and do some other work, so it would be a benefit in that regard, yes.
So, is that gonna be included somewhere in the facilities master plan two information online?
That's actually the, if you recall from facilities master two, and we will during the presentation show, that the gym got pulled out of, and in the renovation of the gym space, got pulled out of the overall project and moved up in the timeline. So, this is, this would just be the funding mechanism that could help maybe move up others because funding became available that we thought we were going to have to come up with, but now it's coming from somewhere else.
Thank you.
Okay, questions from the room, Ms. Witski?
No questions.
Ms. Petrowski?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
No questions.
All right. All right, thank you, Dr. Mealy.
You're welcome.
Tune in on the 4th, 7:00 PM, cam studio. All right. There is no old business. We tried to wrap up any old business in preparation for a change in membership. So, we do have some new business to go in, the first reading of the revolving account budget. Dr. Mealy?
So, as we do in March or April each year, we've already approved the operating budget for next year and we bring forward the revolving account budget for approval. This is the first reading. We would be asking for a vote at the next meeting, but the attached budgets reflect the proposed budgets. The main ones being food services and community programs, those are our two largest. The directors, Rick Galante and Erica Murphy, have given us the projections of what they expect to happen next year and that's what has informed these budget requests. And most of the other ones have just stayed the same, which they do each year. We anticipate some amount of funds coming in for these and being spent for the purpose of whatever that account is. So, for instance, transportation, we bring funds in for paid riders and those funds are used to pay for some of the transportation costs, but as you know from the operating budget, not nearly the whole cost of transportation. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I can identify regarding the, I'll just pull these up here. Make them a little bigger. Things to keep in mind for community programs, we are still not sure if we'll be back to normal for next year. Rick is projecting close to it. In most years, he would be getting about 1.2 to 1.3 million in receipts for Kid Stop and Breakfast Club. He thinks it's gonna be about 1.1. Excel, he expects to be about the same and then, summer school about the same. And then, the expenses, you can see some differences there. Most are accounting for inflation, but he is seeing an increase in what he has to pay his employees. Now, he's finding it much more difficult to get them because he's competing with increasing wages on the outside. So, he's anticipating a need to increase his salaries for his program people. And you can see that in both salaries other and in the salaries professional. You see that. But other than that, we did make some changes to his expenses. We normally charge more for the custodians, but we've cut back there and also on some of the help he'll give us with regards to use of space in order for him to break even for this year. In years past, the community programs has generated a surplus each year that helped him build up a healthy surplus, but we find that he is now breaking even each year and so, we're trying to make sure that he's able to sustain his program. The opposite is true for food services. Whereas, we've said before, for the longest time, ever since I've been here, food services, Erica does a tremendous job, but they just break even and get from one year to the next sustaining themselves. But with all of the federal reimbursement for all the meals that they've produced over the last couple of years, they have built up a nice surplus and she's been putting that back into the program and equipment and other ways. But you can see that the big change, the federal reimbursement was 2.7 million or projected to be 2.7 million for this year, where it will be back to normal about 600,000 for next year and paid receipts will be higher because we'll be actually charging again. And then, the expenses, the same thing, you see a reduction in expenses and in salaries because she's been using her people a lot for extra time to produce those meals that we've been delivering to the community and that won't be necessary next year. But she still is projecting to have more than, more revenue than expenses.
Dr. Mealy?
Yes.
When those school lunch staff have a reduction in hours, is that gonna cause any unemployment benefits? It's because it's been, right, it's been an increase in benefit and?
They're not eligible for, because it's overtime, so they wouldn't be eligible for overtime benefits for that.
Thank you.
Same would be for custodians, they've been working a lot of overtime and that just isn't eligible. And then, as I said, most of the others stay the same, athletics, transportation. We're not sure what our, we anticipate athletics to be about the same, but transportation might be a little bit less. So, we think it makes sense to approve the same amount and that'll allow us to use those funds. We would only have to come back if we were gonna generate more and we don't anticipate that being the case. In preschool, custodial overtime, rental fees, all of the others are staying the same. And then, we've added one at the end, which is unrestricted donations and those are the types of things that come in and just need to go back out for whatever they're donated for. And we've had examples of those over the years for specific reasons.
Dr. Mealy?
Yep.
On the community programs with Kid Stop and Breakfast Club, are you anticipating keeping the tuitions the same?
So, good question, because burying the lead, we've done this so that no fees will be increased for any of our revolving accounts this year, this coming year.
Great, thank you. And my other question was, I guess it's part of what comes next on the agenda, but is there any impact of the SCA funding on the food services revolving accounts? The supply chain?
It might offset so that she actually gets to put more towards her bottom line for those funds, but they're very prescriptive about what they can be used for. Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions from the room?
Can you just explain?
Let me start virtually here, sorry, Ms. Picard?
Yep, just a couple of comments. The non-residential special education, I think the fiscal year expenses weren't in red on that one, so you just wanna, unless, for some reason, they're not supposed to be in red.
That would, yeah, you're right. I didn't put the minus sign in front of that, so it didn't go red, but that is an expense.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, I just want to say to the committee, I hope at some point in our future, we're able to eliminate athletic fees. They're in our revolving account. We know they discourage students from participating. I know that we offer scholarships or we offer gratis participation by having fees that are sufficient, that everybody can participate. But we know statistically that if there's a fee, a family is more likely to choose a different activity for a student and I think that's a loss for those students to not have that choice. So, that's a long term.
I support that.
Me too.
Much agreed. Other questions from the room? Ms. Witski?
No, no questions, thanks.
Ms. Petrowski?
Can you just explain, because this isn't my forte, but if you're looking at the salaries for the custodian, there's a significant difference. So, to me-
For community programs?
Yeah, sorry.
Right, so it's not, that's not for a particular custodian, that's how much, it's kind of an indirect cost charge to community programs because they use the space of the schools. And so, we're cutting back on that to help his bottom line.
Thank you. And then, moving down to under school lunches, the difference in the food supplies is also significant and actually, services, repairs and equipment, those are all pretty significant.
Okay, so, we talked about the labor being a reduction, but saying they're not going to be producing as many meals, so-
Okay.
Materials and supplies are down. And then, the last one you mentioned, the equipment. Erica took care of a lot of things this year.
That's right.
She doesn't really have that list, it's kind of been taken care of.
Okay.
So, doesn't have that need for next year.
Thank you, yes, I do remember that conversation and that makes sense now, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Hicks?
I'm all set.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Mealy, one last question, I don't remember if it's up or down on your sheet here, but rental fees, do we anticipate that changing now that things are kind of opening up a little, excuse me, a little bit more?
We hope. We'll find out. That number, because the rental, the rental fees don't generate as much as people might think. It's, you know, outside entities that pay it. But that's been pretty steady, except for obviously during COVID. That's the number that it has been before COVID.
Okay. I just didn't know, you know, other organizations were starting to plan for 22, 23 events and starting to put those requests already in, so.
Yeah, I have to sign all of the requests and I will say that they are getting back to where they were.
Good. Okay, great. All right, I think we continue with you here, Dr. Mealy, on the next informational budget update and then, the SCA funding.
Right, so the budget status update hasn't really changed. We've been projecting for a while now that we would use completely the operating budget and SR2 and have to tap into SR3 for about $600,000 of the 2.98 million. That remains the projection, that hasn't changed. We did add, I will click on, so we included the normal expense report for the operating budget, but we also included, at Ms. Picard's request, the other funds and accounts that we have. And so, that's included in the packet as well. You can see the COVID funding that we get from the town is there, the circuit breaker and how much we've spent of that so far and all of the other accounts, athletics, you can see so far and that does not include the spring sport yet, which is why it's about two-thirds of what it would be for a year. But all the other accounts are there, you can see how they're tracking as well.
Okay, questions from the committee, virtually, Ms. Picard?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
All right. Back in the room, Ms. Witski?
No.
Ms. Petrowski?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
I'm all set, sir, thank you.
All righty. Nothing from me, so we'll move on to the next one.
Okay. This last one is informational and Joe mentioned it earlier, the SP, the SCA funds that are coming into most school districts, North Andover has received $125,143.33 and it's to help offset the challenges and the additional costs of supply chain difficulties and other problems that the pandemic has caused. And so, as I said, they're very prescriptive, you have to use it for materials and food and supplies, but it is money that's coming to us and Erica will be able to afford herself of using these funds.
All right. Any questions from the committee? Ms. Picard?
Yeah, I'm wondering, was, did the district have to do something to have these funds allotted to it or did it happen automatically from the state? Did like, did we have to do an application of some sort?
So, Erica had to provide some information, it wasn't extensive at all in order to just assure that we got the funds.
Thank you.
Back in the room, Ms. Witski?
No questions.
Ms. Petrowski?
No questions.
Mr. Hicks?
One quick question, can you give us an example or examples of unprocessed or minimally processed foods? Domestic food products?
I don't know.
You don't, just curious.
Yeah.
We do have Erica come in, I think, once a year.
Okay.
And the guidelines, they're quite prescriptive.
Yeah.
Yeah, she is...
Apples?
Yeah.
When Erica comes, she usually brings cupcakes, so that is definitely a meeting you want to be in person for too, so they're quite good. Awesome, well, thank you to Erica for securing these additional funds for us as well to help us. All right. I don't see anything else, so we will move over to public comment.
We do have some public in the room, Andrew.
Yep, I was just gonna say, Ms. Witski, can you help me with that?
Does anybody have a public comment?
I'm good for today.
Yes, we have one.
All right.
Stanleyburg 43 Stone Cleve Road. First, let me welcome you aboard, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
We're so glad to have you here, and always glad for citizens to participate in our town government. So thanks for stepping up, we appreciate it. Just to comment and sort of follow up to your Facilities Master Plan Two night and echoing something Ms. Ricard said, we had originally been thinking that it might be hard to get the message out about Facilities Master Plan Two and getting people to town meeting and all of that. Now that seems to be going very well, and the public seems to be probably more aware of that than I would have imagined at this point in the process, so that's good. And of course, the good news is that the town manager has made the funding available so we don't have to have an override or any other special thing to do a town meeting to get money to pursue these projects. And of course, the MSBA activity, which will help us a great deal in being able to move forward on those. But the other project, which has now just come on our radar recently, is the Royal Crest Development Agreement and what that will mean to the schools. And I just wanted to ask you all if, sort of the follow up to Ms. Ricard's comment, will that kind of be included in the informational activities about Facilities Master Plan Two? Because that could be equally important. And I don't know that the voters or the citizens are gonna be aware of that very much. What do you think, Mr. Mealy? Will that somehow make it into the informational mix as we start doing that for the next couple of months, six weeks?
Yeah, I think it's kind of conjecture because it's not a done deal.
Right.
So I guess you could respond to the question with, if this happens, then that.
Right, okay. Because in the same way that we have been thinking about encouraging people to come and support the Facilities Master Plan Two effort through the CIP and getting their vote for that to approve the CIP, it would be interesting to get their support for those warrant articles that need to be passed to get the funds from the developer for that. So I think it sort of falls in the same category. I hope we can add some informational, I know there's, you know, certainly a lot of restrictions on what you all can do in terms of things, but certainly just providing the information to the public is part of what we're doing anyway, might be a helpful thing. So I just add that for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Is there other public comment from the room?
No more public comment.
Okay, perfect. So we have member comments, and we'll start virtually, Ms. Ricard.
I just really am so pleased with the number of people who showed up for the election. And I've always said, I think that contested races are good for the community, and so I'm very thankful for everyone who ran and everyone who supported candidates and everybody who came out to vote. We will miss Ms. Mably, but we are delighted to welcome a new member to the committee. So thanks, Mr. Hicks, for showing up, and it was great to see you swearing in yesterday.
Awesome. Ms. Witski?
My comment's gonna be very similar. Welcome to the committee, Joe. We're glad to have you.
Ms. Petrowski?
Can I say ditto? Just kidding, welcome to the committee, I'm glad you're here.
Mr. Hicks, first public comment, member comment.
I'm super excited to be here. I am thankful for all those who participated in our small democracy here in North Andover. It's important that we talk about our issues openly and give everyone a chance to participate. And I'm very excited to be here with you all and to continue to do what's best for our kiddos. Thank you.
Awesome. So really, I'm just gonna echo everything, you know, I'm excited about the future and looking forward to continuing, excuse me, continuing to work together. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I can't see the room, so...
So moved.
All right, sounded like Mr. Hicks being bold in his first motion.
Second.
And Ms. Ricard with a second there. Just making my notes here, sorry. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Ms. Witski?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And if you're vote yes, we are adjourned 5:00 at 8:16. I will see you on the 12.